Go ahead.
All right, I'd like to call our meeting to order and I'm going to begin with our land acknowledgement. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are in Mi'kmaq and the District of Sabaginagadi, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. East Hans further acknowledges the 50 African Nova Scotia communities whose 400-year history have contributed to the province's culture, history, and legacies. We are all treaty people. Next, we'll have a moment of silent contemplation. Next, I'll be looking for the approval of our amendments to the agenda. Moved by Councillor Mitchell. Seconded by Councillor Green and without my second monitor, I can't see you all. So if I miss anyone, that's going to be problematic. All those in favor? Contrary motion is carried. The item of business on the agenda tonight is a request from Gore Fire. I did forward the letter to everyone. I'm guessing that everyone has seen it. Just to summarize, on the way home from a fire, the motor failed in their tanker, which was, I believe, a 1990 truck. And upon consultation with their mechanic, it was determined that the old truck is not worth fixing. That leaves them in a tough spot. They are down a truck. They have been trying to put money into reserves because they did intend to replace this truck in 2027, but they spent some of the reserve money on BAs and that has left them with only $50,000 in their reserve fund and they're trying to build that back in. And I know that we do have their financials because the municipality does them. Yeah, I guess we'll go from there to the memo that's been posted with details about financing options that might be available. And Kim, do you want to take that?
Sure. So councillors, the memo that was posted is in a full staff report format because we simply just didn't have time. Finance staff worked today to pull together some numbers and I threw them into a memo for you so you have it in one place, but essentially the request doesn't come with a dollar value. I think they need to understand how much council is willing to contribute so they can get to market as soon as possible and start looking for trucks. These used trucks come on the market through auctions and through sales. And I guess it's opportunistic to be able to have your funding in place and go after one of them if one becomes available. So for the public's benefit, council does have a fire service funding policy, which outlines various sources of funding that we give to fire departments. I've pulled out three or two sources from that grant policy for you to consider tonight. And then there's another option at the bottom of the memo. So the first one is emergency funding. There's about $99,000 in reserves. You do put about $15,000 a year into that reserve, but you also take out from that reserve for some risk management stuff and some fire projects. So right now, there's $99,000 in that reserve. Historically, the amounts from that reserve have been smaller in nature, 20,000, 13,000, and for things that weren't foreseeable or planned. And I just gave you an example. There's been more over the years, but in the most recent sort of five to 10 years, those are the four that have come out of that reserve. The policy with emergency funding does require that the requests go through the fire advisory committee. That's really the only fly in the ointment in this case for this funding. But I think the fire advisory committee, you know, is represented as an advisory committee of council. So ultimately, the decision rests with council if they are willing to take money out of the fund and provide it to a fire department. The next one is the fire, rural fire capital funding. The balance in that reserve is $598,000. If you'll recall that this fund was set up in 2017, 2018 to address some needs of the fire department. There was a switch with rural fire tax, sorry, rural gas tax was used for general fund items and those general funds were switched out to fund the fire capital assistance fund. So that fund over the years, there was about 412,000. That was the original monies that were put into that pot back in the day. That has since had more money put into it. As you funded things like the sportsplex and did some switch outs and moved some of the gas tax money over to the sportsplex, you moved some contingency money into this fund, which over the last couple of years, the fund has grown to be $598,000. You've also updated your policy. So that talks about this fund being able to be used for things like equipment apparatus and buildings for firefighting and which this truck would fall into. And the application needs to come from the fire department. The grant says, supported by majority vote at a duly called meeting of the fire service membership, which I'm not sure whether Gore has had a chance to do that or not, but they could certainly ratify that at one of their memberships if he chose to give some money from the rural fire department capital grant fund.
I do know that they met last evening and drafted the letter to come to us at their meeting last evening. So I'm sure that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. And then the third option, sort of throwback to the days of before we had the fire capital grant set up. You do have rural gas tax in a gas tax fund, the Canada Community Building Fund. And that money has been set aside by the municipality for rural use. There's nothing in our agreement with the federal government that says we have to use that for rural use. That's something that council has done. So if you wanted to use those funds in your rural gas tax, you would essentially reallocate your gas tax back to general fund gas tax projects and allocate some contingency money from your contingency reserve to the fire capital fund to fund this project. With the amount in the capital fund, I'm not sure that you need to do that because you do have $600,000 in that rural fire capital funding. So I think between that and the emergency money, you're probably okay, but I thought I'd put that option in there. And just as a note, the emergency funding pot is there for all fire departments. And it would be, it is funded by the general tax rate. So Madam Warden, that's sort of an overview of the memo. Do you have any questions? I can certainly have.
Any member of council have any questions? Councillor Tingley.
Just a couple of questions there. When did their tanker engine fail?
Oh gosh, I don't know the exact date. It's within the last week, week and a half.
Okay, so how long can they safely be supported with a tanker from a nearby fire department?
Well, none of the nearby fire departments have a spare tanker. They're working regionally now with coverage and that. And that will, there's no easy answer to that. It could work very well that way for a lengthy time. Or if there were more than one fire to occur in the region simultaneously, it could become a problem very quickly.
Right. I was talking to our fire chief here in Lance and he mentioned that to me that there's a report coming, which I knew about from the risk manager for East Hans Fire Services, Bruce Langel, in connection with the fire insurance. And he said that report is also going to discuss rationalization around the fire services equipment. I don't know if we have that report or if that speaks to any of this, you know, like what type of equipment they actually need. And that goes to another question. I don't know what we're going to decide here, but you know, should we have a study done of the fire services? Or should we talk about the, talk to the fire services about having a study of the whole fire services about what equipment or what their needs are, type of thing? So we have a total plan that probably would help in this type of situation as well. In speaking with Corey Orchard in the past and Bruce Langel, they both have indicated to me that we would benefit from a fire services review, but I don't know how we go about doing that. And the last, well, I see West Hans has had conducted one in 2019. And the last thing I have is, does Adam Clarkson or Calvin Byard have anything to say in regard to this with their positions as primary contact with the fire department and administrative support? Those are my comments.
Okay. Well, first off, I will say, this is just for me. I think council, any council would be open to a request from the fire service. We have not to date had a request like that from the fire service. With regards to timing, I don't think that this department is in a position to wait for us to do a study on what we might do in the future before they get a fire truck. Those are my comments. And regards, I'll turn it over to either Adam or Calvin, to either one of you. Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden.
I've got you on next, Keith.
Specifically, just to answer the councillor's question around the report that Mr. Langel is doing on behalf of the fire service around the insurance. We do have a draft copy of the report. It is, I think I'm still waiting for final sign off from the fire service, but it's pretty much there. But it does list, from my first review of it, it does list the overall number of kind of assets within the fire service, but really the intent of the report isn't around, it's around the insurance side and understanding the number of assets and types of assets was part of the review. So I don't know if that answers the question in there. It does have some comments. Again, I haven't seen the final version, but it does have some kind of comments just around the whole fire service as a whole. And I just think to the second piece, I think, Warden, you've mentioned it and this has been our message to the fire service at the chiefs meetings around any, and just then chiefs informally around a review. It needs to come from the fire service has been kind of the discussions that we've had unless council were to determine otherwise, so.
So is it my understanding that we don't understand their needs, but they understand their needs and they're coming to us and telling us what their needs are, which is fine. But do we know what kind of an apparatus they're looking at, like, you know, anything about the specs on it or what it's going to cost?
They're looking for, what they know is in the letter that I forwarded earlier. They're looking for a tanker. They would like to have a tandem. They would like to have, I forget the size pump, and they would like to carry a couple of thousand gallons. But they're understanding that financially, if that's not possible, they'll take the best they can get. They're also looking for a truck that's between 10 and 15 years old, if possible, something that's newer than what they had, but certainly not brand new.
Do we know how they determine that need?
Well, they are a fire department who have been operating for over 50 years in their community. So I'm just assuming they know what gear they use and what they need.
Okay. I don't know, like, I'm not an expert on it. You know, I just assume there's standards and I'm just asking the question. That's it.
Keith?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. So I guess my question was answered. I was going to ask whether they needed to, whether they were going to replace the motor or are they going to replace the whole unit? And from what I'm hearing, it's the whole unit.
Yeah, the truck is a 1990 with some structural issues that were discovered when they went to the mechanic.
Okay, so have they been online? Have they got anything halfway in mind right now? Or are they just looking to see how much they have and then go looking? I guess that's the point. And have they reached out to, you know, Halifax Fire, Colchester Fire to see if there was a spare tanker to just limp them through until they can find a replacement?
Okay, I know they have been watching online and searching online places for trucks. There was an auction that closed yesterday, but had a truck in it that could have met their needs. But until they had some idea of financing that they could get, because they were still waiting to hear from the bank on how much they could borrow and they were hoping to get some from the municipality and they were not comfortable making a bid on something without knowing how much money they had to spend. I can't speak to whether they have reached out to Colchester or HRM. I know that there are no fire departments just locally that have a spare truck that they could borrow. The chief did tell me that he knows that at some point in time, Elmsdale is going to be replacing a tanker and that will be a tender process. But, you know, they don't know what that's going to look like. But they've certainly, I think, been asking around and looking around.
Well, I would suggest that they look outside their own area, the own East Hans area, and maybe put it across Nova Scotia that maybe we could, somebody out there would have a spare tanker that they wouldn't mind lending to keep, you know, to keep this operational in that. I don't care where it comes from, whether it comes from Cape Breton or where. But, you know, if we get something to hold them through. Now, in that bid process that you talked about, an auction, do you know what that truck that they were looking at exactly went for? Because what I'm trying to pinpoint is what kind of price range are, you know, are these trucks going for?
I do not know that. I'm not an expert on fire trucks or the costs. I know in the letter that they sent, they said the costs that they had come up with thus far, there was a range that they had found, but in conversation, they acknowledged, you know, that these things come available every day and they could conceivably come across something that would be less than that. I'm just trying to remember here, I look at the.
Madam Warden, the letter said 250 to 300,000 are the trucks that they've seen online that have come across their way.
Two, 250 to three?
Two, 50 to 300,000, yes.
And do they know what they can borrow?
They've contacted their bank.
They've contacted Scotiabank and I think they've reached out to RBC. They haven't heard back yet. Their budget numbers were in the letter of what they get for levy and grant and what their budget, operating budget is a year. They do not currently own a loan, so I'm hopeful that they'll be able to obtain a loan of some type. Their concern is they don't want to take on more debt than they can reasonably afford.
Well, didn't I hear them say that we do the books for Gore Fire?
Yes.
Well, what is staff's opinion? What could they, what could they reasonably afford out there, right? Is what I'm kind of trying to get at. If you're looking at two to three 50 and we can give them a little bit on that or whatever we can give them on that, what can they, what can they handle as a department? But this again talks to what, to me, what I've been asking for for years and what Councillor Tingley alluded to. I'm not saying right now, but we need to look at this fire service and have a study done to see if there's any way that we can better the way we deliver funding or we deliver services to the fire departments, you know, with regard to buildings and maintenance equipment. So that's, that's for down the road. But for right now, can staff tell us what they can reason, what they can reasonably handle as a payment?
So Madam Warden, we've had today to look at this and finance staff did answer some questions. So one of the things that we looked at fairly quickly was just what would their levy need to increase to, to fund $100,000 financed over 15 years? And that's about two cents. So, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that. And if, you know, if they were going to do, if we're going to do a loan guarantee for them or some, something like a comfort letter, we would, we would have to have exact numbers to work from. But they certainly can't afford just to add the debt to their books. You know, if you look at the letter that they had, their annual levy is 109,000 and their expenses are 106. So, and they get $10,000 from the municipality. So there's not a lot of room there in a small department like that.
They also get around 40,000 in fundraising. But that's, you know, that's not a guarantee that it'll be that much every year, but that's in their experience.
No, I understand, I understand that. But there, again, I'm trying to get back to this, but what, you know, other departments in parts of East Hans don't have to fundraise and we have to fundraise just to keep going. So those are the points I want to try to make. But I would like to see Calvin or work with the fire service or Adam to reach out across Nova Scotia to get these people a truck so they can keep their residents safe in the meantime until we get this truck paid for. So that's what I would like to see them do. Because if we stay within East Hans, we probably aren't going to find anything. But if we broaden our scope to out there and there's good people in this fire service right across Nova Scotia, that we may just jump at the joint chance to help a fellow fire department out. So I would like to see our scope broadened and to get some relief very quickly. Thank you.
Madam Warden, if I could, if you read the letter from the fire department, they are certainly making an effort, not just within East Hans, but across North America to find a new truck to replace this vehicle. I'm sure within the fire service across Nova Scotia, they, you know, there's avenues to look for that. I think they're probably better suited to do that work than Calvin or Adam would be, but we can certainly provide any assistance that they need.
Sandra, Councillor Garden Cole.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just from what Keith was saying, I'm thinking that, Keith, you were thinking that they would try and borrow one temporarily from another fire department while they try and access one financially. So it would be more of an interim thing. And I do think that if there was one out there, fire departments are pretty supportive of each other. You know, maybe there is one out there that would get them through the pinch. But in the meantime, they, they need to be, you know, looking for one, as it sounds like they have in Georgia and all over the place, looking for one that might, might come up. What I'm wondering is, it looks like they have 50,000 already. They're willing to put that towards it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then hoping to get some from us and then figure out what they could borrow or what they have the ability to borrow after securing those funds from us plus the 50,000. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that they do have the 50,000 available.
They do.
And I am as well wondering financially what they're capable of borrowing so that they know what price range they're going to be looking at. But, okay, thanks.
Deputy Warden Green.
Thank you, Warden. Know the Gore department quite well, work alongside them. Just to Councillor Tingley, just one thing, it's not only their own district. They are sadly lacking now in water, but it's also the vast mutual aid agreement that we run. In Lance, you're all on services in the corridor. You can hook up to a hydrant and away you go. Here, we're looking at probably 15 minutes to get a load of water there to continue with the firefighting. Hence why they're looking for 2,000 gallons. I have great confidence in them finding a decent truck. Their deputy chief is a former salesman. He has contacts nationwide and down through the States. I'm sure the search is probably ongoing and probably having some, some positive feedback on that. And like I said, I'll throw this out there. If there's money in that fund, I think Gore should be entitled to some of it. I'd throw out that we, we give them $100,000 contingent on them bringing back the total amount of the truck that we could help them out with that. And then that would give them $150,000 to start out with. No, it is, and then they're only looking, if they're looking at a 300,000 truck, they're only looking to finance 150,000. I so move that.
Moved and seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councillor Musa had seconded, sorry, I didn't say that. Hey, Councillor Heb to the motion? No. I'd like, if I could, to ask the deputy warden if he would take the chair for a moment?
Yeah, go ahead, Warden.
I'm certainly going to support that motion because in the last round of funding that we gave from that pot, Gore was the department that received the least amount of money from that round. It was something like $4,000. So I think it's certainly reasonable to give them $1,000 out of that fund. That's what it's for. It's to support the rural fire departments and infrastructure needs. So I certainly support that and I will be supporting the motion. I'm going to try another motion following this one, but I'll leave a discussion to this motion at this time, which is $1,000 from the Rural Capital Assistance Fund.
$100,000.
$100,000 from it towards the truck once we, you know, once they have a figure in mind and so forth. So anyway, I'll turn the chair back or you can keep the chair, whichever.
Just for clarity, that's from the rural fire capital funding.
Yeah. I will turn the chair back to you, Warden.
All right. Now, I don't, who was on to speak? Councillor Musa? And I saw Councillor Perry, anybody else? Okay, Councillor Musa.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Well, when, when, when we were fighting for that money, we saw the need. Like when the pavement gap came on, we saw the need for the fire department that they always underfunded. Like they're the, they're the one underfunded. And I'm glad we did what we did to support and that money is going to be used wisely. And one more question, like when we did the 4% of the deed transfer tax, how much they get out of that a year?
I believe the, some of it was used to reduce the fire rate and then the remainder that was there increased the grant that they got from 8,000 something to 10,000 or approximately, I believe.
Okay. I'm hoping this budget, we could, we could increase the 4%. This way they don't have to increase the rate on their 2% rate. Thank you.
Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just for clarification, the funds are all coming out of the rural file, fire capital funding? There's nothing coming out of the emergency funding at this time?
That's something I'll address when this motion is done.
Okay.
But this motion is just out of the Rural Capital Fund, yes.
Roger that, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor? I, contrary, motion has passed unanimously. I thank you very much, councillors. And I would now ask the deputy warden if he would take the chair again.
Yeah, go ahead, Warden.
I've listened to the discussion and I appreciate the points of view of everyone. I am pleased to have this amount of money. I'm going to make a, I haven't had conversations several times with the chief over the past little bit about this. This department is, they're, they're doing the best they can and they're looking everywhere and they're concerned about getting something suitable as quickly as they can that will fit in their haul. And I just recalled that they did tell me that I think its HRM has one coming up that would meet their needs. Unfortunately, it's 35 feet long and they can't accommodate anything longer than 33 feet. So they're not able to tender or offer on that one. So they are looking and they are looking around. And because the lack of a truck, we haven't, we haven't used that emergency fund for a while. And that's what it's there for, is to help fire departments in time of emergency. The same as the Rural Capital Fund is there for infrastructure that fire departments need. And I was surprised at how much that had built up. And that's heartening news because I believe Maitland's in the process of starting to look at a, at a truck. And I think Noel is in that vicinity too. So it's good to know that there may be some money there that will assist those departments with equipment too. But back to the emergency fund, if you don't ask, you're not going to get. So I'm going to ask councillor. So I'm going to ask council if they would also consider a grant from the emergency fund of, of $20,000 as that seems to be the average amount that comes from that fund in times of emergency. That would give them 120,000 that they were comfortable with, plus the 50,000 that they have. And hopefully with their money that's coming in and their budget, and if, if need be, they can raise the rate. It should be much easier for them to handle a, a loan. And they also, you know, it's not like this department hasn't been with their budget that they have, hasn't been with their fundraising and their, and their monies from the municipality. They have been putting money aside to try and replace their equipment. But it's a limited, it's a limited taxation base and they're doing the best they can. And even after, had they not bought the new BAs, they'd have had more money to put into a truck. But you need breathing apparatus to fight fires too. So anyway, that's my ramble. So I'm going to move that we approve $20,000 from the emergency fund to assist with this truck as well.
Moved by Warden Rolston, are you seconding that, Counselor Musa? Seconded by Counselor Musa that we award $20,000 in emergency fund. Counselor Rhino.
Yes, just wondering, you spoke of that HRM one there. Is there any talk about them expanding their station by five to 10 feet to accommodate that?
Under today's regulations around, as I'm sure you know from Maitland, it's the cost to do that. I, I don't think it's something the department could handle. It's not something they're thinking of doing, certainly wouldn't meet the needs right now. They couldn't get plans and loans and.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any clarification, Deputy Warden? Um, just, just a point of clarification. The first motion was contingent on them coming back with a financing plan. I know when departments are looking at these used trucks, there's often sort of trips to go and see vehicles and check them out and whatnot, mechanics fees to have them reviewed. Do you intend to have this to help them with those funds? Or do you intend to have this come back with a financing plan as well?
For the emergency money?
Or are we just giving them a check for $20,000 to, for what they need to have happen?
Well, I would, I'd be all right either way. But where they do have $50,000 towards the truck themselves, if they had nothing towards the truck, I'd be saying use this for whatever.
Okay.
But you know, I'm, I'm fine with when they find a truck and they're ready to buy it. And we have a further $20,000 from the emergency fund to help them.
So once coming back with a financing plan.
Counselor Musa? You're muted. You're muted, Counselor Musa.
I tried to, I did it to myself, thank you. So when other fire department want to borrow for a truck, we usually do the borrowing for them or?
No, we usually give them a, through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, we usually give them a letter of comfort for the bank. So, yeah.
Okay, I thought, I thought we did the borrowing for them too. Thank you.
Any more comments on the motion? Are you looking for the question?
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor of the 20,000 from the emergency fund? Motion's passed unanimously.
And if I could, Deputy Ward, I'd just like to take a moment to thank everyone, every member of council and staff for pulling this meeting together so quickly and getting the information that was able to be gathered and being able to respond to the fire department as quickly as you have. Kudos to each and every one of you. I, I appreciate it and I'm sure the fire department appreciates it and will appreciate the support that they're getting from council in this instance. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will turn the chair back to the warden.
Well, that concludes the business on the agenda this evening. Having nothing else on the agenda, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion is carried.